I'll call the November 5th Davie County Board of Education meeting to order. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Remove.
Mr. Fuller, I need a second. Ms. Livengood, is there any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda? Six-zero. I also need a motion to go into closed session pursuant of attorney-client privilege to discuss student matters protected by NCGS 115C-402 and the Family Education Act right to privacy. Motion from Clint. I need a second.
Second.
Fuller, all in favor? We are now in closed session. Thank you. We are reconvening at 6 o'clock, the November 5th, Monday, Board of Education meeting here at Central Davie. Let us please pause and bow our heads. As we gather this evening, I ask this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance this evening. Further, we are thankful for the opportunity to govern and the freedoms that we enjoy. We pause to remember the students, the faculty members, and families in our system who are facing challenges. Our positive thoughts are with this group of folks. As always, we seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the students and the citizens of Davie County. Peace be with you. At this time, I would like Aunt Justin Boardwine from Troop 575 to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause). (Applause) Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Justin. That was fantastic. Let's move on with the agenda, the approve of the minutes of our regular meeting on October the 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Ms. Livengood. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fuller. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Madam Chair, Board members would look on page... I'm getting there. Page four. I would ask you to consider not rewriting the minutes, but if I say this today in regard to the last month's meetings, then it's in this month's meetings as a point. If you look down, the ninth paragraph, it's the big one at the bottom, fifth sentence, it says, "Mr. Draxler posed questions as to needs presented to the board in the past and presented information he has researched and feels necessary for the people he is representing." I did not get to finish my thought when that part of the discussion was there, so at this meeting, I would like to, just sort of an FYI, and for the minutes of this meeting, to add what would have been the end of that sentence, that instead of saying necessary for the people he is representing, I would also like to add, just for thought, that it's necessary for the people he is representing and for the benefit of the board members who will be voting on this issue today. Because I wasn't just talking to a handful of people, but in addition to the... But in addition, I was speaking to the board here. Thank you.
I need to ask clarification from Jill.
Well, I don't think there's any request to amend.
Okay. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure. All right. Thank you. That is noted, and it's noted in the minutes of this meeting. All right. Is there anything else that needs to be... All right. I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of October the 2nd? Please raise your hand. Seven-zero. Now, it's time for the board report. Just going to run over a few dates for you. I cannot believe that it is November, and we have been in school for several months now, and things were moving quite well. We are here this evening because of the voting, and I hope that all of you take the responsibility of voting and the honor of voting tomorrow in the election. Myself, Carol, and Paul will be at the North Carolina School Board Association State Conference in Greensboro, November 12 through the 14th. We will also be having lunch on the 15th at Cornanser, and Early College's Open House is that evening also at 6:00. I would also remind everyone in this room that on Sunday, the 11th, is Veterans Day, and 2:00 on the square, there will be the celebration. That's 2:00 on Veterans Day, and I hope to see all of you there. The 4th is when we will have our December meeting, December 4th. We also have a webinar at 1:00 and at 6:00. Later on in the month, we have day graduations. On Monday at 1:00 will be Shady Grove. At 4:00 that evening, there is a Christmas social for the board and invited guests. On the 11th of December is 9:00 graduation at Moatsville Elementary, and on December the 13th, at 9:00 is the Kulaumee graduation, and we hope that all of you who have graduates can attend those also. And then we will be in training for board docs on the 6th that evening at 6:00. So that is going to be an interesting training for all of us to learn to go paperless. And some of our levels are a little bit different when it comes to the computer. I hope that everyone will, as I said, join us on September the... November 11th for Veterans Day on the square at 2:00. And right now, I will ask the superintendent to give his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. October has been an outstanding month. I want to thank the board members who were able to join me at the Kulaumee Elementary Open House for our cafeteria dining room renovation. That project turned out really nice. Also, I want to thank the board members who were available and came to take a tour of Davie County High School and to have lunch at the high school on October the 25th. I thought that was a very good visit as well. Appreciate the staff and Ms. Haynes for giving us that tour. Several of you also attended the Chamber of Commerce Gala that was a few weeks ago, and you heard an amazing story of the story of Ashley Furniture from Ron Wanick, Chairman of the Board. Our community is really blessed to have the world's largest manufacturer of furniture coming to Davie County. Mr. Wanick talked about the history of Ashley, the plants that they had all over the United States, and China, and Vietnam, and it was just amazing to me. It's kind of hard to grasp and get your hands around, but he shared that the plant in Davie County will be the largest manufacturing and distribution center in the world for them, like 68 acres under roof. That's just kind of hard to picture, but I believe Ashley will have a tremendous positive impact on our community for a long time to come, and I have a brochure. If any of you would like to learn more about Ashley Furniture, these were handed out at the Chamber Gala. Very interesting story, though. Also, if you heard this past week, on October the 24th, Mr. Eddie Everhart presented Karen Martin, a sixth-grade teacher at Ellis Middle School, and our District Teacher of the Year. He presented her with a 2013 Honda Accord to drive for the rest of the school year. Excuse me. Mr. Everhart's dealership, you know, is in Statesville, but he is a Davie County citizen and continues to support and invest in Davie County schools. And I would just ask that when you see Eddie Everhart, that you would thank him for his support of our teachers in Davie County. Since our last regular board meeting, our Strategic Planning Commission has met twice. We met for two full days, and then last Friday, we pulled all of our administrative staff and principals together and spent a day working on our strategic plan, and I hope to bring you a draft of that plan very soon. I'm very thankful and appreciative of over 50 people who spent those days working together and talking about the future of Davie County schools. It was a very productive time and a time that was just filled with a lot of great ideas and positive ideas about the future of our school system. Tonight is our first meeting that will be televised. We're recording right now. We will be airing school board meetings in the future, the week following the meeting. So if we have a meeting on Monday or Tuesday, the following week, that meeting will be aired, and the schedule is as follows. The meetings will be aired at 10:00 a.m. and at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Saturdays. So 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Saturdays. If you subscribe to Yadtail IPTV, you will watch Channel 25. That's where those board meetings will be aired. If you're on the older version of Yadtail, you don't have access to our meetings. So you'll need to upgrade to IPTV. That's a Yadtail commercial for our first show. Time Warner, if you have Time Warner and subscribe to Time Warner Cable, it will be aired on Channel 6, and again, those times are 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Saturdays. And we'll run those for two weeks following each of our board meetings. I'd just remind the board, as we're recording, if our meetings exceed an hour and 45 minutes, we're going to take just about a two-minute break so that they can change the VCR. I'm just kidding. They will be switching out some of the recording equipment at that point in time, so we'll take a two-minute recess for a minute and... Or a two-minute break. I want to thank our technology staff that are back there right now, working on their first recording that will go on the air, for making this possible. My vision is that we will involve our students in our digital media class in the future and give them that experience in putting together a video production. So we're working on that as well. You know that board docs training is coming up in December, and once we get board docs online, we will link the video to your agenda on the Internet as well. And the last thing I have to say is if there's anyone in the audience tonight who has not voted, I would encourage you to be sure to cast your ballot tomorrow. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And it is exciting to have these taped so that our citizens in Davie County can see the school board meeting. At this time, I'll turn it over to Stephanie Kofick, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Hartness, and members of the audience, we have several recognitions tonight and much to celebrate. We'll get started with the Principal of the Year. Mr. Jeff Wallace will introduce that for us. And as you're being recognized, we've got the camera shot for you to stand right here. So come on up, Jennifer.
Come on up, Ms. Custer. (Laughter). I see your view of family is recognized, Ms. Custer. This is another opportunity I have, is Ms. Custer has been recognized more than once as being our Principal of the Year, but this is another step in what we typically do in awarding her with an A-plus pin, and I can assure you, she's definitely an A-plus person, mother, wife, and obviously an A-plus principal. So, Ms. Custer, congratulations. Very proud of you. It's an honor to work with you. Thank you.
(Applause). Hi, Jennifer. I'm the head of the board. So, Jeff, yeah, I've known you for a long time, and I also, I do thank a lot of you so much for being very grateful on the stage here. And I would just like to say a special thank you for the support that the board, Doc Hartness especially, have given me over the last couple of years. And I have to say a special thank you to my family, because, you know, this is not a 9-to-5 job, but yes, and my children are very supportive of me, and I can do this without my husband and my family, so thank you. (Applause).
Okay. At this time, let's go ahead and do the United Way traveling trophy.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you all. It's such an honor to be here before you again tonight and with a special award, and I hope there is someone here from the Transportation Department of our school system. Is there anyone here from our Transportation Department? Yay![922.13][922.13](Laughter). Guess what? You get to come up and be on TV![926.32][926.32](Laughter).
You know, every year, we have our United Way campaign with the Davie County school system. It is a wonderful campaign, and we have a traveling plaque that goes from school to school or department, whoever has the greatest percentage of increase from the previous year. And this year, it is definitely the Transportation Department. The Transportation Department, as a matter of fact, had about a 367% increase over last year. Isn't that great? (Applause). Todd, it's so good to see you. And I want to present this plaque to you with our gratitude and thanks for your support of the United Way.
Thank you.
And I thank our school system and our board for your support. We couldn't do what we do without you, so thank you so much.
(Applause).
Okay. At this time, Noel Grady Smith will recognize the middle school band directors.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board members. Dr. (Laughter)... Where did that come from?[1025.13][1025.13](Laughter). He's sitting there going, "Hartness."[1028.13][1028.13](Laughter). So I wanted to add a little humor to the evening. I'm here to be a part of honoring three folks who have done an exceptional job in just kind of reinventing the wheel with our middle school all-county band program. They have stepped up to new levels of participation. The students came to a central area to audition this year. There were a lot of nervous students at North Davie High School, with everybody there assuring them that everything would be fine. The music they produced last Saturday was just amazing. They had only a day and a half to work as a team, and I'd like you to know that Mr. Jason Carter has helped us out by having a program at each of your places, and there is a CD with the concert on the program. It was very striking. Mr. Chris Ferguson, who is a talented clinician, was with our students, and he just couldn't say enough about the training that they've had. So we are very, very pleased to honor our three middle school band teachers, Mr. Jason Carter. Jason will also be representing Davie County at the North Carolina Music Education Association Conference on Monday. He will be presenting a workshop on bringing new websites to the music teacher's classroom. So Davie County's technology expertise is reaching into a statewide milieu, and we really are proud of him. Ms. Amanda Inabbitt is from William Ellis Middle School, and she's new to us, and we could not be happier. We just about didn't let her get out the door before we offered her the contract after the interview. We were just thrilled that she could come and join us. And Mr. Justin McCrary is our new band teacher at South Davie Middle School. Now, you can imagine, both of these new teachers are following very tough acts. There were two spectacular middle school music teachers in those roles, and they have come in and done a wonderful job. It's a wooing process to get people to believe in you and continue with you. So we're happy that this trio has brought us so much richness in the county, and we congratulate them on all their accomplishments. The students who participated had a wonderful experience, and it's due to their dedication. Thank you.
(Applause). I have to say, I've known you for a while, and I can't wait to come and hear your concerts, but what they have pulled together for the middle school students is phenomenal, because middle school students do not like to stand in front of other people, much less perform. But for what they did, what they gave those children, that sense, I can do it, and that accomplishment really shows. And again, thank you for doing the dis. That brings a lot of joy to our family, and we are so honored to have them as our band directors. Thank you. (Applause).
Do you want me to continue? I don't understand.
Dr. Hartness, members of the board, I would like to draw your attention to a very, very unusual and deserving young person from Davie County. This is Stephanie Jamie from Davie High School. Could please come up, Stephanie? Stephanie has the unusual and hard-fought-for honor of participating in the 2013 Special Olympics World Winter Games for alpine skiing. We are very proud of her. She has been skiing about six years. She has unparalleled bravery, dedication, and a strong self-discipline that has led her to this accomplishment. Along with her family, she has worked very hard, and she will be traveling to... Where are we going now? Lake Placid, New York in December to train, and then she is going to be in Korea. And we just can't say enough about how exciting this is. She will be competing with North Carolina athletes for Team USA in Pyeongchang, South Korea, and the World Winter Games for the Special Olympics. I know that all of you sitting in the audience and at the board feel the way I do. This is a remarkable accomplishment and a remarkable young lady and family. I hope that you'll all join me in letting her know we're all behind her, and we're extremely proud of her. (Applause).
Hang on just a minute, let me... And then you can speak, okay?
Okay.
Stephanie, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me personally to hand this to you, because you've been a special part of my life, too. I've known Stephanie since she came to the preschool where I worked when she was just a baby, and to watch her grow into this wonderful young woman, and we just want to wish you all the best and congratulate you on this great achievement. And I know she has something she would like to say as well, so I'm going to turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you for the opportunity to go to South Korea to participate in Special Olympics. I will try to do my very best in Lake Placid. You will do your very best, we know.
And you'll do your very best in South Korea. (Applause).
I'm brilliant.
Yes, you are.
You are. (Applause).
Okay, Stephanie. At this time, we will have Jenna Haynes to present the Burlow's Welcome Fund PRISM Grant.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, come on down. Greetings, Madam Chair, board members, staff, and guests. It is my honor tonight to tell you a little bit about Lester Robinson. Last January, when I started at Davie High School, I did a staff survey, and I will read from his survey. He said, "Next year, I would like to start an RC airplane club." And I immediately thought, "What is RC? And how do you have an airplane club in high school? Because we can't fly." He went on to explain, "My goal is to show students that the math we teach is used in science and engineering." And in parentheses, he put STEM. And this was before we implemented the STEM program. Since then, Mr. Robinson has prepared a long-range plan, a four-year plan, for developing an aviation club. And this plan moves from developing gliders and rubber band models up to simple and kit-built models, and then on into student-designed models, and then furthermore into advanced topics. He has looked into all sorts of plans as far as incorporating Newton physics, aerodynamics, electrical systems, reverse engineering, various avenues of technology, trigonometry. I could go on and on with big words that are scary, but I won't. With these plans, he began reaching into the community and looking for sponsors, talking to students, trying to get some interest and that sort of thing, and he took it upon himself to apply for a Borough's Welcome Grant, actually a PRISM Grant, which stands for Promoting Innovation in Science and Mathematics. These grants are very competitive grants, and he found out last week... Is it last week? Last week, he learned that he had been awarded a $3,000 grant to begin an aviation club at Davie High School. So please join me in congratulating and thanking him for his efforts.
(Applause). Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication.
And I'm going to pass his brochure around so that you all can see it.
Oh, he has it. Wonderful. I'll let you go ahead. Okay. In our final recognition tonight, we have Tom Kapetsky, I'm sorry, with Toys for Tots.
Chairwoman, board, my name's Tom Kapetsky. I'm with the Marine Corps League, Davie County, Roan County. We come together to create one veterans group. But in this, we come together to support our children in both communities, but here in Davie County, we take care of our children here. And in that, we've taken care of over 1,500 children just last year that were less fortunate that really needed something for Christmas, and we come together and get them toys. We don't get them clothes. We don't give them food. We give them toys. That's what the children look for. They look for it at Christmas time, and we're here to help the parents maintain their dignity, their honor, by providing them toys to their children. The children doesn't... They don't know it comes from us. It comes from their parents. But what I have tonight, what I'd like to do, first off, I have two certificates. The first certificate I have is from Toys for Tots, signed by John F. Kelly, Lieutenant General, United States Marine Corps Reserve Commander. Stephanie, could you represent the county, please? First off, it's called the Commander's Award. The United States Marine Corps Reserve is proud to recognize Davie County schools for outstanding support of the 2011-2012 Marine Toys for Tots program. Your generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. Signed, John F. Kelly, Lieutenant General, United States Marine Corps, Commander, Marine Forces Reserve, and Coordinator, myself, Tom Kapetsky. You guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, our league knows what this county goes through, and the outstanding support that we get... Okay, in our final recognition tonight, we have Tom Kapetsky, I'm sorry, with Toys for Tots.
Chairwoman, Board, my name's Tom Kapetsky. I'm with the Marine Corps League, Davie County, Rowan County. We come together to create one veterans group. But in this, we come together to support our children in both communities, but here in Davie County, we take care of our children here. And in that, we've taken care of over 1,500 children just last year that were less fortunate that really needed something for Christmas and we come together and get them toys. We don't get them clothes, we don't give them food, we give them toys. That's what the children look for. They look for it at Christmas time and we're here to help the parents maintain their dignity, their honor, by providing them toys to their children. The children doesn't, they don't know it comes from us. It comes from their parents. But what I have tonight, what I'd like to do, first off, I have two certificates. The first certificate I have is from Toys for Tots, signed by John F. Kelly, Lieutenant General, United States Marine Corps Reserve Commander. Stephanie, could you represent the county, please? First off, it's called the Commander's Award. The United States Marine Corps Reserve is proud to recognize Davie County Schools for outstanding support of the 2011-2012 Marine Toys for Tots Program. Your generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. Signed, John F. Kelly, Lieutenant General, United States Marine Corps, Commander, Marine Forces Reserve, and Coordinator, myself, Tom Kapetsky. You guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, our league knows what this county goes through and the outstanding support that we get from this community is just really crazy. When we started this in 2008, we really didn't know, Stephanie, what we were doing, did we? I mean, we were completely lost. We were a bunch of old Marines. We call ourselves Romeos. Retired old Marines usually eating out somewhere, but we said to ourselves, "We want to do this program." And we got with Stephanie a long time ago. And they, the counselors, Stephanie, the school in general, have come to us and in great support of this program because they know we are here about the children. Just like this school system, they're here for the children. It's all about the children. It's not about anything else. And I love that and that's what our Marine Corps League loves also. So in that, we said to ourselves here this last couple of months ago, we said, "What can we do for the school system that helps us tremendously in helping us provide for the children? We're going to put them in the Marine Corps." So in that, I have here a certificate of honorary membership to the United States Marine Corps League, to Davie County Schools for exemplary service in the interests of the United States Marine Corps and the Marine Corps League, presented on the 28th day of August 2012, with sincere appreciation, signed by the Adjutant Thomas K. Kapetsky and our I know everybody wants to get out of here, I know this. Are there any of the counselors here tonight? Say hi out to them. What I have here is our challenge coins. Our challenge coins in the Marine Corps, we usually carry in our pockets everywhere we go of our unit. And in times, you could be somewhere and you throw a coin out and when they hear the coin, they should have their coin on them, right Stephanie? And Stephanie owes a dollar. And it's just a way that we can promote camaraderie, integrity, and our unit sticking together as one. And functioning as one makes us even greater in the Marine Corps and we try to bring that into our community here in Davie County. And all our counselors have this challenge coin and I'm going to give them to you to give to them. I would appreciate that. And it is a Toys for Tots Foundation Challenge Coin from the United States Marine Corps to our counselors and Stephanie, of course. And I have one for the school to put with the certificate this year. I think that is something I believe to show. I would like to see it just be shown, if it can be. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Stephanie Kofed, Kelly Crosby, Billy Joe Wall, Jennifer McPherson, Krista Gary, Suzie Horton, Candace Thurman, Barbara Weaver, Angela Langford, and Kristen Orgnon, Mrs. O. She's got one of them complicated names like I have. So at this time, I would like to go ahead and give them, give you the coins. A thank you and our Marine Corps League thanks you. Thank you.
I would like to say congratulations to each of you and I've never been a Marine before. This is fun. I like this. Always wanted to, but I couldn't do that. Stephanie, good luck. You'll do well. And to each of you who've gotten awards tonight, we say congratulations to each of you and keep up the great work. Now, we will move to our consent agenda item. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Excuse me, if I may, Madam Chair, I'd like to draw the board's attention to pages 21 and 22. If you will please remove those pages from the consent agenda and move them in behind page 32. They should be put there. They're a business item budget amendment to be approved during the business item section.
Okay, so page number?
Pages 21 and 22. If you'll tear those out and they need to be approved during the business item, not the consent item. Thank you.
Thank you. Give everybody a chance to pull those out. All right. Yellow. All right. Is there anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Ms. Clint, do I have a second? Chad, is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Now, we're moving to the business items and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Hartness and Mr. Wallace and?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first business item is roofing bids for North Davie Middle School and South Davie Middle School. And I would direct any questions you have, page 31, 32, and the two pages you just removed. I'll turn it over to Ms. Smink for that.
Thank you. On page 32, you'll see a business item for roofing bids at South and North Davie Middle Schools. These bids were opened on October 18th. The bid tab sheet is there for your reference. It's on page 32. The low bid was professional roofing services of Mount Airy, North Carolina. The total base bid for both roofs is $476,900 with the addition of alternative number two to replace the existing skylights in the amount of $10,680. This brings the total bid to $487,580. To date, the Board of Education has drawn down lottery funds in the amount of $200,000 for the North Davie roof and $225,000 for the South Davie roof. I've attached a budget amendment and that's those two sheets that you've pulled out that were originally pages 21 and 22. This is a budget amendment for $62,580 of capital outlay fund balance for the additional amount of the roofing projects. It is the recommendation that you approve the professional roofing services base bid and alternate number two bid in the amount of $487,580 and the capital outlay budget amendment as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve? Wendy, do I have a second? Carol, do we have any discussion? Any questions we have? All right, I'll call for the vote. The superintendent's recommendation to approve the roofing service bid and the alternate two bid in the total amount of $487,580 and the capital outlay budget amendment as presented. All in favor? Seven zero.
Madam Chair, the next business item you have on your agenda will refer to page 33. When the Davie Early College High School first opened on the campus, the Davie campus of Davidson Community College, a classroom pod was purchased and that classroom pod is located behind the Davie campus. Can't see that from the road. It's a six-classroom pod. It was purchased for approximately $175,000. Since that time, you know, we've done renovations on the Gant Building, we did an expansion on the Gant Building, and all of the classroom services can be conducted in the Gant Building now. So the board no longer has a use for the pod. In discussions with the community college, the community college also does not have a use for the pod at this point in time. We have received a rough estimate for removal and setup in another location of $70,000 to ninety thousand dollars to remove it from the site and set it up in another location. The staff doesn't recommend that we relocate and continue to use the pod. It served its purpose. We moved into another building. So the staff recommends that we advertise the pod for sale and the buyer would be responsible for removal. So the recommendation tonight is to declare the mobile pod surplus and authorize the staff to sell it as any other personal property.
All right, do I have a motion to declare the mobile pod surplus and authorize the staff to sell this personal property? Steve makes the motion. Is there a second? Chad, is there any discussion, any questions?
Is there any idea what you could get for that?
I don't have a really good idea of that, Mr. Junker. What we do know is-
Seventy to ninety to move it and set it up.
Right. What we do know is anything that we do gain from the sale of that will be added to the savings that we would have of seventy to ninety thousand of relocating it. So what we will do, we have talked with the original provider. They've recommended that we put it out for sale and spring is probably the best time to do that. We've shared with the staff of the community college, we would like to have it off their campus by the end of the school year. So we will go through, we have several avenues to try to sell this piece of property. I would most likely send out a notice to the other superintendents in the state to see if there's another school district that might have a use for a classroom pod. And then we've used gov deals before or other methods of disposing of property.
There actually is a market for used mobile units amazingly. There are businesses that refurbish and resell them, so you probably get some.
And what year, what year was that, that it was put in?
Six years ago?
Six.
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Comments? I'll call for the vote. All in favor to declare the mobile pod surplus and authorize the staff to sell this personal property? All in favor? Seven zero.
Madam Chair, the next item on your business agenda is review of qualifications submitted for the selection of an architectural services. Based on the board's action on October the 2nd, the staff prepared an RFQ along with our legal counsel for the architectural services and that was advertised and qualification packages were due back on October the 19th. There were five architectural firms who responded to the RFQ. The qualifications packages were placed in your mailboxes and have been available for you to review since Monday, October the 22nd. It's the board's responsibility to review the qualifications and select an architectural firm that demonstrates both competence and qualification for the type of services that we are requesting without regard to fee or price. We're also supposed to consider whether or not there are North Carolina companies. All five of these who responded are from North Carolina. Then once an architect is selected based on their qualifications, the board would then authorize a superintendent to begin negotiating a contract with that architectural firm that's selected. So the recommendation tonight, you've had an opportunity to review these five qualifications packages. The recommendation is to select the most qualified architectural firm that you have received a qualification package from based on the RFQ that was submitted and advertised. And once you select an architectural firm, that you would authorize a superintendent to negotiate a contract with that firm.
And board members, if it is if we're unsuccessful in reaching a price that you can agree to, then you move to the next architect. So this is simply a preliminary selecting the first architect to begin negotiations with and hopefully you reach a contract amount, but sometimes that doesn't happen.
The process that we have used in the past is we've usually chosen two that we felt like were not what we wanted. Do you want to do that way or do you just?
You need to select one.
Sorry, I need to select one. All right. Sorry.
We can move to the second one if you need to.
Okay, all right.
I got a couple of questions and concerns. I noticed that Little did not submit a RFQ on this project and so I talked to Tom Balki at our October work session and he had submitted to you a letter on the reasoning behind it and I noticed that also MBAJ Architectural had basically, they submitted RFQ but they had some reservations in about the, how ethical it was and lawful it was to take a copyright that belonged to Walter Robbs, Callahan, and Pierce. And I'm just concerned that the way we've worded this thing, that we've taken Little out of the picture. He didn't feel comfortable submitting an RFQ and I would like for us possibly to see what we could do to reword this thing and put this thing back out again and see if, you know, they didn't want to take the plan that we already had and redo it. They had some concerns with that. And, you know, we spent a lot of money with Balki and I've got a lot of confidence in him and he was, I'd like for him to at least submit, be able to submit an RFQ and based on the way we done it, he didn't feel comfortable doing it. He had contacted North Carolina Architectural Board and they recommended that he not do it.
I guess my question would be, do we, how do we feel about this RFQ? I mean, we've, it's been worded a certain way. I mean, is that, is it worded in a legal manner that we've, we don't have any legal issues with that, I guess is my question.
Well, I'm not the Architectural Board, so I can't answer whether it is or isn't appropriate. Obviously, you have five firms who felt they could-
Right.
-meet the terms of the RFQ. It's up to you guys to select the one you feel is the most qualified to do what it is you wanted to do. But if you recall, what you wanted to do was have somebody update those plans so that your RFQ reflects what the board collectively decided to do. And you can look at the firms that have submitted and, or you can decide that you want to do something different, but the RFQ reflects the actions of the board, which was to update the already existing plans.
Well, MBAJ, they submitted an RFQ and basically, you know, they would, they saying that they would look at the previous design, but they would, the way I understand it, of course, I'm not an architect, so I don't really, but they would not use it. They would just, they would not redo it. They would just maybe use it as a guide, so, but they was, Tom Balki said there was concerns about both firms having liability if they went in and revised it. And, you know, I think we, I've got some major concerns over that and really, I do have, and I have another problem with redoing this because I really don't know what this first school looked like. I've talked to Dr. Hartness several times about this and, you know, I hadn't been able to get up with him. He's offered, of course, I probably looked at the blueprints, I wouldn't know what I was looking at anyway, but, you know, I have concerns about the sizes of classrooms and stuff like that in the original plan. You know, Mr. Balki recommended that we have at least 850 square feet in the classrooms. I want to make sure we got that. I'm sure the core stuff, the cafeteria, the gymnasiums and stuff like that, since we're going bigger, they'd have to certainly have to revise them, but I don't know about the classroom part.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm through.
Okay. I guess the only thing I would say is, I think the way, from my perspective, the way we worded the RFQ, it's, I mean, to revise and update the plans as we see fit to accommodate what we're asking for and, I mean, from my perspective, I guess, you know, we have, I guess I see value in the plans that we have and I'm not necessarily talking about dollar value. I'm talking about, you know, we've had the American Architectural Federation sent architects in. We had a, when that plan was designed, there was a couple of days charrette that we went through that those guys came in and worked with the board at the time, worked with the administration, and then worked with Walter Robbs. That's, I see value in that and I understand that and I certainly have confidence in Tom Balki and the things that he's done so far, but I surely, I guess my only thing is surely there's a way for us to utilize to a point what we already have, is my only thing.
Yeah, well, I don't- Yeah, well, I don't, you know, basically, I think MBAJ said that they would kind of just look at them, but I would like somebody, some architect to take a look at and come in and tell us how they laid out. I want to know about the hallways, I want to know about the classrooms and stuff like that, you know, because we don't want to get in a situation that if it's got seven hundred and fifty square foot classrooms and we need eight fifty, then, I mean, I don't know what's in it.
No, I understand, well, I mean, I think that's what-
And I think you and Ms. Owens were the only two that were on the board, so we've got five new members here, and I think it would be, it would be good if we could have, I wouldn't mind having Tom Balki take a look at them and come in, and, you know, he basically took a recommendation of the, he looked at the existing high school and compared it to what DPI recommends, and told us where we needed to change, and I just want to make sure that when we move forward with these plans, if we do, that it's what we need.
And I think, I would just say to that, and I'll be quiet so someone else can talk, but I, I mean, to me, I think that's what we're doing here, whether it be Walter Robbs, whether it be Pinnacle, whether it be MBAJ, or Little Diversified, I mean, I think that's what we're doing. I think we're, we're asking someone to come in now, and with everybody's feedback, systems' feedback, this current board's feedback, this is what we're looking for. But, to me, there's a structure in what we have there currently to work from. That's my comment.
I would like to say that, since Chad and I were, and we did have the opportunity to work with Walter Robbs, and we do have an idea in reference to what the plan states. When you work with an architect, you sit down with them as a group, and I've had that opportunity as a principal, to be the administrator who represented principals on an architect group, where we sat down and we planned a school, and that was Conansor. And everything that we ask, they put in that plan for us, and I actually had the opportunity to work in that school and to see how well those things work together. When we choose a firm, I want a firm that listens to our staff, that understands our education goals, and that they match what our goals are with the facility. And I personally know from my experience with Conansor, that we do have a group that can do that from personal, from personal knowledge, and we own those plans. And, as Chad said, the American Association of Architects came in and spent time with the community, time with the staff, and time with the firm, and they redid those plans. And if we need larger classrooms, we tell them that. If we need larger hallways, we share that. This plan is a base, but the vision that we have for the new Davie High School, One High School encompasses everything.
Well, I understand that, but it's still, I do have a problem with, and I think Tom Balki used the word liability, and because both of these, the way he explained it to me, both of these firms would have to sign off on the, on the, you know, whatever happens at the end, and he said that could, that could be some problems, and, you know, I don't have a problem, but I'd like to know what's in it, what the school's going to look like, or what it already looks like, or what they're going to redo, and, you know, and I just, I feel like that Tom Balki could do us a good job on that, and the way we've done it, we've basically excluded him.
Steve, I just wanted to see if you can clarify something for me. Are you wanting us to reword the RFQ? Is that what you're asking to do? I mean, you're not specifically asking us to use Tom Balki. You're wanting to reword the RFQ.
Reword it to where they, to where they don't come in and just revise these plans and make the gym bigger, because we've made the core bigger, the cafeteria bigger, because the core's bigger, you know, and stuff like that. I want to make sure that, there's some problems with it, because we've got two groups that said, that said something about it, and, you know, I would like, I would like to reword this thing to where they didn't feel like that they had to come in and just use this plan and just build around that particular plan, because I think when we done the original renovations for the high school, we've probably got fifteen or sixteen RFQs. Do you remember, Chad? I mean, we got-
I can't remember.
You know, we only got five.
Can't remember.
We only got five here, so it may be other firms that were, had this same concern that didn't send a letter like Tom Balki did, and I just, you know, I'd like to just do that.
Clarification, then, would you be talking about designing a high school from square one, because I don't know how else you would, what else you would do?
I picked up on part of the conversation with Tom Balki a month ago, and his concern was, he kept using the word liability, and one of these companies also used that word. So, there's three people here that didn't acknowledge or didn't think about, or didn't, weren't concerned about any kind of two-point liability. The two people that were concerned, one of them submitted anyway and said that he would use the prints that were done way back when as a template, but that they would come up with their own plans so that they were single liability on the finished product. And Balki, I guess, could have done that if he'd have thought that. My concern as a newbie on the board is that we've gone through a period of time and expense that we have pretty much trusted Tom Balki and his group and the research and all the work that they've done, and as it sits right this second, we did not open a door that allowed him to feel comfortable about sending an RFQ. And I don't know if he would win our selection committee process or not, but to give him an equal share at an RFQ using the plans that y'all did, what year was that done, Chad? Whatever year that was, there's a lot of work that was done back then that, to this point, has never gotten, we haven't used it for anything yet, except for spending the money. But, we've recently spent another firm a lot of money and time and effort that we're using it for our long-term plan and the phase one, two, and three for each of, I mean, there's a lot invested in the new guy, to give Tom and that group a shot at being able to use that as a template and do his own plans so that he doesn't have a liability issue. I think that would be just real smart. Thank you.
I think, I mean, at what cost do we start over? I mean, it seems like we're ignoring, I don't know the exact dollars, someone can help me as far as what we've spent already on these plans that we own. Any ideas? And again, we're not talking about, I mean, we're here to decide, and I guess the, we're here to decide about the RFQ, and we're provided this RFQ, and we were giving, given five of them, like I say, there's a couple of them that noted in there the question about the liability. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I almost say it's common sense, but it's business. I mean, yeah, it probably, it makes more sense for the company that's already been invested this much time and effort in it to tie, to move forward with it, to move forward with them. I mean, to start completely over, whoa. I mean, I, that, that seems to be going way backwards to me, and I don't know cost estimates about, okay, if we just completely start over, what are we talking about? And then, what's our goal? I mean, our goal's to get a great plan that we can move forward with. So, now all of a sudden, and, you know, love Tom Balki to death, but, I mean, now all of a sudden, he's the only one that can provide us with a good plan, and I don't think I'm ready to say that.
I didn't say he, I said that we basically excluded him from the process based on what he said to me. I didn't, I didn't say that I was ready to pick him and his firm, but I just, I feel like we've excluded him, and basically only getting five back, we may have excluded some other well-qualified groups.
Well, again, I feel like that's discounting the qualified ones that we got, and so it just seems like there's maybe something else as a, as a goal, but, I mean, just to spend money, just to keep spending money.
Well, what we ended up doing then, basically, is just saying then, basically Walter Robbs, Callahan, and whoever, Pierce is the only one that we can take.
No, we're here to look at qualifications. If you want to spend extra money with another firm there that you look and see is more qualified, which is, again, then, to my understanding, I'm not an architect, but as far as what RFQ is, we're talking about moving forward to engage, to answer all the questions that you just asked, which are great questions, and definitely as a board, as a school system, we've got to know the size of the classrooms, what our needs are, engage with that architect. And, to me, that's all we're looking for, is trying to figure out the most qualified out of what we've received. If we would have received ten, I think we'd still be talking about this tonight. I don't know what number we could have received where we've said, okay, yeah, now I feel good about moving forward. I'm just, I'm concerned about that.
I do want to say that we did not exclude anyone. When this RFQ goes out, it goes out across our state, and people choose, firms choose, but we did not exclude anyone.
And I understand what Steve's saying, too, as far as putting out that RFQ, yeah, there's going to be a lot of architects that looks at it and just says, God, they've already got a leg up on us, as far as all the work and everything that they've done. But, at some point, again, we're just making the best decision of moving forward, so I understand your comment, but-
I didn't have a chance to ask Tom questions after the last meeting, but as Clint said, I mean, from a business, business perspective, I would, would, well, and I don't want to say I know what he was thinking, but, you know, it may have been, not the fact that he didn't necessarily feel comfortable with submitting, but if he knew that we, you know, had somewhat gone down this road before, that, you know, as Clint said, we, we do have some idea of what we're wanting to have in terms of one new school. I just, I don't necessarily, I guess my, my feeling is that I wouldn't necessarily want to say just the reason he didn't submit was because he didn't feel comfortable.
Well, I would, and to your point, I don't want to interrupt you, Wendy, but, I mean, we did get three other proposals, five total, but we got three other proposals that didn't even make a comment about it, and they're very qualified architects, and that's, I mean, again, I think Clint's point, if it was, if it was five, or ten, or fifteen, I mean, I, you know, we still are faced with, the circumstances we're faced with, and I'm very thankful that we did get all the proposals that we did.
Well, I think Steve brings up a good point, when the, we certainly have a lot of respect for Tom Balki and his opinions, but it sounds to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Walter Robbs' plan is sort of living and breathing, and we can take information from, recommendations from Tom Balki, decide as a board, we really like that, and Walter Robbs' plan is willing to take our recommendations and make those necessary adjustments to the existing plans. Is that correct? And so, we kind of have the best of both.
We do.
And we do have an existing set that we have paid for.
Right, we do, and we also have a history as far as with Conansor and with Ellis, and knowing how they work with the staff, and that, to me, is very positive.
So, to the point, we've got history with Little, Tom Balki, and with Walter Robbs.
What we asked Little to do, he's done. He's done a great job. He's given us a roadmap, he's given us, if you think what has transpired in the past six to eight months with facility, redistricting, strategic plan, all of these things coming together, they're all coming together at the most opportune time, and choosing the architect tonight is the next step to that, to that dream, to that future 21st century school.
Again, can someone answer that question as far as estimated, we have this plan that we could go out, and it's not, again, obviously, we're not going to do that because we need to adjust and everything, but the dollars that the county has spent on that plan?
Mr. Junker, I'll give a shot at that. I don't have an exact dollar figure, but I would estimate that the architectural fees associated with that plan were in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars. The project at that point in time went all the way through the bid phase, so you're probably looking at at least seventy percent of that fee being spent through that phase.
Okay.
So, that, that kind of gives you an idea of how much is invested in the construction drawings that you have.
And again, helping me with the process, if we started over, would I be thinking that we would be starting over with those fees?
You're going to have some replication, no matter how you do it at this point, because anytime you change a site, and I don't know if this was the same site, I don't know anything about these plans, but anytime you change siting and permitting and things like that, they have to be redone. So, you'll have some replication, but even if you, if you've got, certainly you have an incredible cost savings, not that you would ever make a decision based on cost in this situation, but you would certainly have a tremendous cost savings if you have existing plans that you can update, versus starting over, you're generally looking at five percent of the cost. Roff asked, if I just had to throw a number out there for an architect's cost of a construction of a high school, if your high school's thirty million dollars, generally speaking, you're looking at five percent of that for your architectural fee. If you have a lot of that already spent, then that's what it would be reduced by. That's just, those are all really rough numbers. I've never seen this plan, I've never seen this contract, I'm just speaking from thirty years of hiring architects.
If I could add to board, I mean, whatever you decide to do, whoever you decide to use for this service, if we use the existing plans, they were developed in 2009, there've been code changes since 2009, we would want to take those plans out on the table, and we would want to engage the existing staff at the high school, the administration at the high school, we would want to look at what we're doing with STEM today, we would want to look at the programs that we offer at Davie High School today, the programs we would hope to offer in the future. The RFQ was written to review and revise and update the set of plans to accommodate space for all students, all programs. So, this would have to be a comprehensive review of that set of drawings, and I can guarantee you that whatever's there, there would be some changes, and I would want, I would want to be a part of that. I was not part of the process. I would want Mr. Wallace, I would want Ms. Haynes, I would want the staff at the high school to have input into what do they want in a modern high school. So, we would use that as a starting place, if we choose to use those drawings, and you do have a significant investment in those drawings. I will tell you from conversations with your other attorney, Artie, this RFQ was written in a fashion that I don't believe we excluded anyone. There were five firms that chose to respond, and I think the board is charged now to determine out of the folks who responded, Little is not a respondent of this, which is the most qualified if you choose to move forward with this RFQ process.
I would, Madam Chair, are you entertaining motions?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we hire Walter Robbs, Callahan, or we ask the superintendent to begin negotiations for a contract, Walter Robbs, Callahan, and Pierce, to review, revise, and update the current drawings that we have.
Do I have a second to that? Clint has second. I'm going to ask our board attorney to repeat that for us. Will?
All right, so your motion is-
Sorry. The motion is to authorize staff and your attorneys to enter into negotiations with Walter Robbs, Callahan, and Pierce to conduct the work on the RFQ, and to, if successful, bring a contract back to you for approval.
Any discussion?
At what point, excuse me, at what point in the process does it have to be determined where this site is? Do we, we don't? I don't.
It, I mean, it doesn't, I can't recall the exact language of the RFQ, but I don't know that you've done, you're requesting such site-specific information at this juncture. So, at some point, you would have to do that, certainly you would, but I think what you're really looking for at this point is more programmatic and schematic design as opposed to sewer water. At some point or another, that is a huge, obviously, design component, site work component, but you, I don't believe under the RFQ, from my recollection, what you're looking for at this point would involve that part. Well, sure, I mean, sure.
Excuse me, y'all did that before. At what, where in the- Excuse me, y'all did that before. At what, where in the process do we have to say, "This is where it's going to be," so that they can build the plans from that?
There are so many different ways you can order this construction. It's very difficult for me to say. In other words, ultimately, you will have to know where it's going to be when you go out to bid for contract. You can't do that until you have a source of funds. So the way you order it before that, I can't tell you. The final thing is, you will have to be site-specific when you prepare documents upon which contractors would bid. Until then, and you wouldn't put something out to bid for contractors until you had a source of funds. Any order before that is up to you guys, within reason.
I think the short answer is, it's up to us, honestly, and I'm not, I don't, I mean, that's to be determined, yeah.
I want to read, I just want to read what Tom Balki said, and I'm going to be finished with this, but it says, "Since the design is a copyright of WRCP and the design is site-specific, specific and sealed by the original architect, a succeeding architect could make changes or modifications to them and take responsibility for the changes in connection with the original design. Note, however, that the original architect is still responsible for the work that he signed and sealed or the original high school design you seek to modify." And he says, "Therefore, it is impractical to consider that another architectural firm could reasonably modify the high school plan contracted with WRCP." But the motion's on the table to, that we hire Walter Robbs and Callahan, but I just wanted the people out, you know, in the audience to hear what Mr. Balki said.
Are there any other comments, questions? We have the motion on the floor.
Barbara, excuse me, could I just say one thing? I have had the privilege of working with Walter Robbs and Callahan prior to this as well. They did an outstanding job with Ellis. I think we have, they've built two schools in our system. That gives them a lot of credibility. I'm assuming, and I haven't seen these plans, I wasn't on the board, but did they kind of reflect Reagan? Were they modeled after Reagan, which is in Forsyth County? Is that correct?
They modeled some after, but after the American Association of Architects came in, they did some changes to that, so they listened to the staff very intently, and then with the, it was a day and a half where they worked?
Yeah, a couple days.
Two days where they worked with everyone. So it has the Reagan beginning idea, but as far as the plan itself, it's Davie County High School.
That's right.
Well, I mean, I just had heard a couple people have expressed some concerns that Reagan has had some issues, as you're going to have when you build a new building, just as when you build a new home, you're going to think, "Gosh, I wish I'd have thought about that prior." So we have an opportunity to learn right there from across the county line.
And I think that's a great point, Ms. Lavin Good. If you want to use the plans and you want to go visit other schools that are similar, the plan that was used at Davie High is unique to Davie County High School, but it was modeled on some features of Reagan, and that plan has been replicated in Forsyth County at Atkins, and most recently at Walker Town. So there are some places where you could go see what that may look like, or some features of it.
And then, and then take that information and make it our own school. Learn from the positives and learn from the areas that they kind of wish they had made some changes.
Anyone else? All right. Jean, can you read that motion back for us?
Okay. "authorize the staff and attorneys to enter into negotiations with Walter Robbs, Callahan, and Pierce to conduct work on the RFQ and bring a contract back to the board for approval."
We had a motion and a second. All in favor of Walter Robbs, please show hands. Six. All opposed. One. The motion passes. Dr. Hartness, if you will take care of that for us, and Jeff, we would deeply appreciate it. Thank each of you for your discussions. It was wonderful. It's now time for public address to the board.
I was so busy writing. We have one speaker tonight, and so I will dispense with the on-deck circle, and just call our first speaker, Tracy, and Tracy has nice handwriting, but I'm still thinking it says Pittman. Okay, let's go on A on that. Tracy Pittman, to please come to the podium, and if you don't mind, Ms. Pittman, if you would please state your name and address when you begin, in case the board has a need to respond back to you.
My name is Tracy Pittman. My address is 143 Cedar Cove Lane, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
And if I could just interrupt you one second, you will see in front of you a five-minute timer on the floor, right in front of the board.
Gotcha.
That, so we don't have to do any buzzing or dinging or anything. That's your timer, so you know when your time is up. Please proceed.
Thank you. I am currently the lead DC teacher at South Davie Middle School, but I come to you tonight on behalf of Davie County Association of Educators. We have a concern, and before I get into that concern, I just want to say thank you to our board members and our superintendent on behalf of the teachers from Davie County. We thank you for all you do for us. We thank you for thinking about our children, and we call them our children. I don't know a teacher that leaves that building and not call every one of those children in that building one of their babies or their children. So I just want to thank you and commend you for all you do for us. But I do come to you, and after all the discussion tonight, it seems maybe petty to you, but it is a big deal for teachers. The State Board of Education has decided to push a bill that had been overturned previously on teacher tenure, teacher due process, career status of teachers. We call it due process and career status of teachers, because it is important to us that we keep a process in line so that teachers are evaluated fairly, and that there's also some type of repercussions for teachers who continue to actually perform below standard. What the school board, state school board has done is they're contacting local school boards and asking them to make a decision based on two options. The first option is to continue career teachers under their current contract, and new teachers will go on a one-year contract. Or option two, which is a year contract for all teachers. That within itself is completely ludicrous. We can't attract or keep good, qualified, highly qualified teachers in Davie County, or any other county for that matter. It'll serve to continue to disenfranchise teacher, it'll continue to destroy teacher morale, and in the time that we're in right now, do we really want teachers with one-year contracts who are unable to support their families because banks won't loan money? Or, and it's going to destroy our economy locally here, because we're not going to be able to buy cars, we won't be able to buy houses, because banks aren't going to loan to us, because we only have, we only have one-year contracts. What I do urge our school board to do, if they are approached, and also in advance of that, is to go back and look at Senate Bill 466. The State Board of Education had agreed, the North Carolina Association of Educators, the North Carolina School Board Association, and the North Carolina Administration Association had all come up with this bill and had agreed on Senate Bill 466, which puts teeth in the law. It also goes in for this year for standard six to go into that evaluation standard, and it gives us the ability to go through the process, it streamlines the process, of getting rid of teachers who are chronically performing below standard. Give time for this bill to work, and I ask you to join with the Davie County Association of Educators and the North Carolina Association of Educators to retain that due process and that fairness for teachers for Davie County and North Carolina. Thank you.
And that concludes our speakers.
Now we are moving to the committee and staff report, and Jeff Wallace, redistricting.
Madam Chair, board, thank you, and our guests here tonight. We want to share with you our, as information to you tonight for consideration, and obviously some input about a redistricting proposal. We started talking about the redistricting proposal last February, and shortly after that, we put together a committee made up of 25 folks, thank you, made up of 25 folks here, as you can see, with equal representation from all of our schools, and we had school personnel, obviously, there, and parents, and other staff members, such as Todd Naylor. Where's Todd? There's Todd, which will share some things with you in just a moment. We met, again, in March, and then we asked, I asked all the state, those members to go out and talk with folks in their community, and ask them to help us set goals for what they'd like to see this redistricting plan look like and what we'd hope it would accomplish. We also, during that time, we took a look at the, how student transfers had an impact on enrollment. But please understand that what we're presenting tonight, and when we'll look at our goals in just a moment, but what we're going to present to you tonight is based upon the folks that live, the students that live in the current districts. So that's the only way we can look at that. We can make discussion, have discussions about transfers and this or that, but we have to set down goals and guidelines based upon these students that are currently living within our district. So we can go ahead. Next, our goals that we determined were to relieve overcrowding and best utilize all of our facilities, consider natural boundaries and develop efficient bus routes, do not split neighborhoods, which we had a situation like that or similar to that. Two elementary schools would feed into one middle school. We wanted to utilize little diversified facility study and demographic projections to assist in determining those new district lines. Enrollment at each school should not exceed 96% of design capacity. Also, to develop fair and realistic grandfathering policy. Now, what we mean by that is, of course, certain children are there now, rising fourth and rising fifth graders, and rising seventh and rising eighth graders, is what that will, what we're talking about there. So that's, this group met, again, the district group met about 10 or 12 times, and the full 25-member group met three times. We have another planned, a scheduled meeting in the next week or so, where once we present this to you, and obviously want to hear some of your feedback, and then we'll go back to the table and take and consider any suggestions, and our goal is to come back to you in January or February and present a plan to have you to vote on as for our redistricting plan. That timeframe is laid out for, so we can, Todd and his staff, the Transportation Department, will begin to redo and redraw some bus routes as we prepare for kindergarten enrollment, or kindergarten registration and things in March. And so that's why our timeframe is as it is. Okay. Current proposal to the board is, we're going to show you some other graphs and maps here in just a moment. Again, grandfather students for two years, which, again, we did speak with Little's Jerry from Little that did our demographic study, and he said, and the committee was definitely in agreement of no more than two years of grandfathering. Couple things I want to make sure that you recognize, and the third bullet says, "No grandfathering of siblings, not in the last two grades of a school." Now, what I mean by that is, if there's a rising fourth grader at Moxville, and the redistricting lines move him to Canaster, that rising fourth grader has the option of staying at Moxville. But if he's got a rising first grade sister, that first grade sister is not given the option to attend Moxville. They are both considered out of district. If the brother decides to stay, he will have to provide, his parents have to provide his own transportation, or provide transportation, again, he's considered out of district. This came strongly from Jerry with Little. If we don't do this, if you have three and four kids, you will continue, it will take our plan six and seven years to work itself out, for we would see any real impact. We had a little test run with this, this current year, school year, at Moxville Elementary, as many of you are aware, and Dr. Hartness worked with our committee, and we decided, and he decided, to not allow kindergartners to come in to register in Moxville that are out of district. Now, he didn't say that if you have an older brother, they have to leave the district, or leave Moxville. He did not have any impact on those, but he said, "No out-of-district kindergartners may enroll and attend Moxville Elementary this current year." And we saw a tremendous impact, the impact we had hoped to have. Moxville folks was operating at 107% capacity. They were using every space that they had, 107. Now, we've gotten them, this year, they're down to approximately 102%, with a decline of approximately 38 children, less than they had last year. So I want to, and I'll be glad to take any questions here. Grandfathering students that choose to stay, of course, would be out of district, provided on transportation, and our current transfer request for, again, our current student request for transfer would not, would prevent schools from having operate over 96% capacity. Now, I can, we can show you the maps, Todd's going to walk you through some maps, or if you have questions now, or you want to wait and look at the maps, might be better, and then we'll go from there. Okay? Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Board members, if you'll take a look at this map you have in your packet and on the screen here, we identified areas, I've got music with my TV time. Okay. We identified areas along district boundaries that potentially were looking at for moving or adjusting into another district. Obviously, we can't move the schools, but we do have an opportunity to move lines. So Area A, that you see up top, is currently, that area is split between Shady Grove, the middle school students from there go to North Davie in Area A, but they go to Shady Grove Elementary School. Our first goal was to try to keep two elementary schools feeding into one middle. So obviously, that was an area that we looked at first. The next area, Area B, is currently in Pine Brooks District, and we looked at some students in this area to transfer to William R. Davie because their numbers needed increasing. Area C is currently in Pine Brook Elementary, and we also looked at shifting those potentially to Moxville or William R. Davie. And Area D is currently in Moxville Elementary School, and we looked at shifting those up to William R. Davie, which also would shift some students out of South Davie into North Davie, because the middle school lines would change. And Area E is currently in Moxville Elementary, and we looked at shifting those students to Cooleme, which would keep them in the same middle school, but it would shift some students out of Moxville into Cooleme Elementary. So when you look at the big picture, the little legend there kind of shows that the students would shift from which school to which school. And we'll go to the next slide. The map that you see on your left are the current school district lines, and you can see that the areas are indicated, A, B, C, and D, we just left off the lines that they included. And the next map, we'll look at other proposed district lines, and as you can see, we've combined Canaster and Shady Grove are all one district now going to William Ellis Middle School. Pine Brook and William R. Davie are two elementary districts feeding into North Davie, and Cooleme and Moxville feed into South Davie. And this particular setup, based on the students that we identified, seem seemed to be the most logical plan. And this is what we brought back to our committee. And we looked at shifting those around a couple of different ways, but this is what we wound up with.
Todd, would you repeat that for me, please? Would you repeat the two elementary schools to the middle schools?
Okay, Shady Grove and Cronatser feeds into William Ellis. Pine Brook and William R. Davie feeds into North Davie. And Coolamy and Moxville feed into South Davie. As you can see, a large geographic area of the county actually feeds into North Davie. Basically, everything above, north of Interstate 40 feeds into North Davie. And if we felt like if we made that district any bigger to increase the student population at North Davie, then we would have to increase bus routes so long and that we would be inflicting on other school districts' back door, basically. So we have to kind of look at where the schools are, where we can logically draw the lines and not encroach too far into each district. So when you look at the result of this particular scenario, if you look at Coolamy, the design capacities here, we took those from the Little Plan. Those are numbers we've talked about for a long time. The current percentage occupied is 74%. And then the percent occupied after redistricting is 82%. And you can go down that graph and look at where we are and where we anticipate we'll be next year based on current student locations. As you can see, North Davie, still the percentage there, they lost some students up out of Section A, but they gained some students back down in Area D to kind of offset that change. Because the majority of the students that were in Section A were already going to William Ellis based on transfers. They chose to go there because that's where they went to elementary school. Many of them chose to go there to the middle school with their friends. So the net loss in North Davie up there was very small. You have any questions about what you've seen so far?
If we could go back to the map, the one map, I want you to take a look at William R. and Pine Brooks Districts. And we, again, moving back to the other graph in just a moment. You're good. Well, that's okay. My point is, again, as Todd said, this is covering almost geographically half the county. Plus, we will have both Pine Brook and William R. at 96% capacity. And so therefore, North Davie, being our largest middle school, we can't increase anymore. But we can look at moving special programs there and utilizing that facility. I just want to make sure that that's brought out. Also, if you see how Coolamy and Moxville and the border there actually with, as Todd was referencing, well, if you'll take a look right in this area, we talked about, we can't come out too far out, maybe say Milling Road or whatever, or you can almost go a rock and hit Moxville School and then you're going to turn the kids around and send them the other direction. And go ahead and go with us, okay? William Ellis is at 90, I think it's 95%, according to this plan. But we should have a little flexibility there. Some of the demographics have indicated that Shady Grove District will continue to decline in population. Now, again, he said, without any major economic boost or whatever. So we're, we know, and he clearly was really clear about that. But both Cronatser and Shady Grove, of course, are, we've got those to the point we can right now that the capacity, because they're going to feed into William Ellis, who currently is going to be about 94, 95, 96%.
I think that's what I had in my notes.
Ellis is at 96, is that what you said?
Ellis at 96, okay.
Now, just so you all, I'll pull you over to the next graph, if you would, please, for the percentage follow-up, yes. So as the committee has recommended, that we not allow student transfers into schools or not to exceed 96%. So what we're in essence saying, William R., whose growth is not expected to, they're not expected to grow very much at all in the next five to 10 years. But you can see they're already at 96%. You can see William Ellis at 96%. So, and then you've got Pine Brook at 95%. So we're almost saying to you now, or we ought to, if you take our proposal, then those schools would in essence be closed, student transfer records, or student transfers.
I think, one thing to clarify, when you say closed, this is if every child within the district lines go to that school. And that's not going to happen. At least, it hasn't happened in my 28 years here. But if we transfer some students out of Pine Brook to another district, then that may allow for some transfers in. So they tend to wash each other out. So typically, I think we'll be looking at the maximum capacity and the principals have an opportunity then to say, okay, my doors are closed until somebody moves out. I can't let anybody move in, that kind of thing. So it won't be a completely non-transfer situation, but there'll be some limitations there.
And just like this year with Cronatser? They have seen some unexpected growth. Now, we could possibly attribute some of that to the situation situated at Moxville. But they've also received about five kindergarteners in the last month. And we've had to add someone, add a teacher there. The law says what it suggests. We don't have a choice. So in fact, they picked up another one this week. So that's why we say 96% to allow a little bit of flexibility. You've got to have a little bit of room for those type of situations. Will we try to address any questions? Carol?
Yes, Jeff. Do you have any idea, based on the current enrollment, of about how many students this will affect?
Yes, ma'am. 131.
Did you already answer that question?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Again, if you take, if you will, the negatives and add those up, should equal 131, and the following should equal 131. Now, again, that's based upon students that live in those districts, which, of course, is what we have to do. 131 children is what it should be.
Any other questions of the group?
So, and you, a quick question, and you may have already answered this. So, for instance, if you have a situation where you're looking at this, as you said, based on students being in district now, if you have a situation where students are out of district and you change this plan, they would have an opportunity to file for a transfer, out-of-district transfer, as long as the total capacity didn't reach 96%?
That's correct. That's what the committee...
Okay, that's what the committee's, right, okay.
Yes.
Right.
That's correct. But again, we, of course, we don't want a school to get to 107% capacity. And that's part of the reason why we're taking a hard look at this. And the little study has really helped us a perfect time so we know what our capacities are, yes.
Any other questions? Please thank the committee for their hard work. I know how hard it is. We really appreciate the fact that you took the time to put the goals together for the committee so that our community can understand where we're coming from and involving so many people. And I look forward to what you bring to us the next time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could also reiterate that thank you to Todd and Jeff, Erin, and all the people who work together, and our parents who served on that committee and gave us valuable feedback and went back to their communities and talked to other parents and set some very reasonable goals and some reasonable outcomes for this. And, you know, Todd's just amazing when it comes to looking at bus rides and routes and pulling all the computer models together. And Erin crunches all the numbers to make it happen. You all have a fantastic team looking at this. And I think they've come up with some good proposals. They'll go back and continue to tweak. And again, our goal is to bring you a proposal for the board to consider adopting in January so we can make this effective in the 2013-14 school year.
Thank you. At this time, it's time for the comments from the board. And I would like, for Carol, I think you're up tonight.
Thank you, Barbara. I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Certainly, congratulations to all our honorees. Jennifer Custer as Principal of the Year, that was amazing. And sitting here, I wish you could have seen, maybe you did, your husband's face because when you acknowledged him, he was so proud, the look on his face of you two. So we can't, none of us can make it without our families. So congratulations to you two as well. Stephanie, I know she had to leave, but what a great achievement for her to be able to get to go to those Olympics. This is a tremendous family. They have worked so hard to be there for these girls. This whole school system has. And that's just quite an accomplishment. And I'm just so proud of that. And congratulations to all our honorees. Just one other thing, I know we've all talked about voting, but, you know, we are very blessed as a county. We really are. We have a county that really turns out on voting day. And probably, most of you have voted early. But we're very blessed to live in this nation. And that's not kind of just by chance. That's because of the efforts of our moms and dads and grandparents and all those that have gone on before. This past Monday, I had the honor of bearing my mother in Arlington Cemetery, which is just an amazing place. And it just so reminded me of people who have made the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms that we just treasure. So I say that just to encourage a group that I already know. You, as I said, you've probably already been out there and voted and you know how important that is for us to do. But what a privilege and an honor it is. So for those of you who haven't, and I have not, because I like to vote on Election Day. I like to go down there. And I like to take my grandchildren and go down there and show them what it's all about. So just, I pray for our country as we go forward and pray for all of you as well. Thank you.
I'll be short and sweet. I would also like to congratulate all the honorees and thank Ms. Custer for everything she does for our system and all the other staff and administrators that are here, too. Thank you. And I think I would echo Carol's comments about Stephanie. It's a wonderful accomplishment for her. That's awesome. And I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight. Thank you for coming out and participating and being involved and knowing what's going on in the community. I think it's very important. And that's all I have. I think that'll do it.
I'd like to say thank you to each of you for being here. I also am very proud of Stephanie because I remember when she was a little tight. And that takes a major, major accomplishment for her. And all the things that have been said tonight and all the great discussion, keep it coming and keep it going. But I have something on my table here. And it says, find joy in life and bring joy to others. And that is coming from our teacher assistants who work so hard. And I want to say thank you for that tonight. That is a great invitation, but the slogan says it all. To have the War Eagles Aviation to start when we have so much transportation around us and aviation is a part of it, to plant that seed. That is, and to write that grant as an individual, that shows the quality of the teachers that we have in our school system. Vote, don't forget Veterans Day on the 11th. Have a safe trip home. And thank you for being involved in our community.
I feel sorry for Steve, who has to go last. You all farted everything. Thanks to everybody for coming out tonight. I know there's, I'm sure there's other things you could be spending your time doing, but it's important for you to be here and be able to go back and let others who were not able to be here to know what is taking place at the local level. Stephanie, it's always humbling when you see somebody like that. And it kind of puts lots of things into perspective as far as how fortunate we all are and how we don't need to take things for granted. So I think we're, I think I've about covered it. But I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Me, too. Thank you for coming. It's good to have lots of people here trying to be aware of the process, things that are going on. I've been approached by several members in the community who have asked me to do a little bit of research and find out something. So Dr. Hartness, I'd like to ask you and Chair Owens, if you would, to go back through some information and see if you can research the reasoning behind the previous board decisions having to do with early college students' ability to participate at the high school in extracurricular activities. If, at least just for me, so that I can talk to these people when they talk, when they ask me again, so that I can explain that to them. And maybe for the whole board to revisit that and see if that's an opportunity that we can enter into. Thank Dr. Hartness, called today with some questions. And right off the bat, I got answers that I needed. Two questions, he didn't know the right off answer. So he researched and called me back just today. So thank you, sir, for doing that. School improvement plan, folks that were involved with that or that are still involved with that. When I was a teacher, I worked on a similar project. So I know about how many hours you put into that and you're not done yet. So I appreciate the time and effort that goes into that process. Same thing with redistricting committee. You are not finished yet either. And that's a lot of work to be doing. So for all of those, and then the last thing is, for anybody that was recognized tonight, I heard a phrase a long time ago, that's what babies cry for and grown men and women die for, is recognition. And sometimes, we don't pat people on the back enough when they do things over and beyond just the regular, normal day. So all of you that were recognized for the various things, thank you very much for your effort. And Tracy, I have a note for you when we're done. I'm through.
Real simple. Thank you. And the future is bright in Davie County. And I'm excited about it, very excited. A lot of things to be thankful for and just tickled to death to be a part of it.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, too. And congratulate Jennifer for the Principal of the Year Award. I know you're real proud of that. And I wanted to say something about Jamie. I'd never, Stephanie, I'd never met her before. And I'm excited about that. And I know she's going to do well. She's a, you can tell she's a hard worker. Carol mentioned Veterans Day and Barbara mentioned Veterans Day. That's coming up. We've got a lot to be thankful for here in this country. We've had men and women that fought and died. And when we get an opportunity, we need just to thank them. And we've got Thanksgiving coming up. And we're blessed. And we just, we need to pray for each other as we move forward. And I just hope everybody has a blessed Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Microphone, sorry, microphone. It is time for us to adjourn, unless there's anything else. I need a motion to adjourn. I'm Steve, II second. Paul, any discussion, vote, or are we ready to adjourn? Seven zero. And thank all of you and happy Thanksgiving.